2021 meeting. At this time, we're going to call this meeting to order. We're going to have our pledge of allegiance at this time. I'm going to ask Brent Myers, you lead us in the pledge and Pastor Moberly, can you lead us in the implication? Everyone, please stand at this time.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let us pray. Father, again, thank you for the opportunity to come together. God, we thank you for your goodness all day long. We thank you for how good you have been towards us. Father, you've been better to us than we've been ourselves. And God, on this evening, we say thank you. We pray, God, that you will have your way now. We invite you in. We invoke your presence in this place tonight. No one is greater than you. You're God. You stand alone, and we give you glory for that. We pray, God, that you would bless us now. Touch our minds, touch our hearts, lift us up, give us what we need. You know what to do. You know how to do all things. As we petition your name, God bless our coming together. And whatever you do, we appraise you for it and thank you in advance. It is in Jesus's name we pray. Thank God. Amen.
We'll begin roll call. Mayor Hill?
Here.
Commissioner Boeram?
Present.
Commissioner Campbell?
Present.
Commissioner Jones? Commissioner McCaskill?
Here.
We have a quorum there.
Thank you.
All right, if we go ahead and continue on at this time, we're moved to item two of the agenda, which is approval of the minutes from April 22.
Motion to set minutes as written.
There's a motion by Commissioner McCaskill to accept the minutes. Second by Commissioner Jones. Any further discussion?
Question.
All in favor, say aye. Both motion carries unanimously. Next up is the proclamation. In memory of Apostle Dr. Elijah Jackson, under section three, which is our recognition, Bishop Jackson, very favorite member of the community. Ms. Krantz, can you read the proclamation?
Thank you, ma'am. Whereas Dr. Jackson was the administrative director of the New Christian Center Homeless Shelter for over 10 years, providing clothes, food, and shelter for many in the Putnam County community. And whereas Apostle Jackson served as senior pastor of the New Christians Center for the past 29 years. And whereas Dr. Jackson was a retired U.S. Army veteran who, upon being discharged honorably, relocated to Palaka. And whereas Dr. Jackson was employed with the Ravine Garden State Park as a forest ranger, during which time he consistently won awards and accolades for his leadership in raising the most funding during the annual campaign for major product checks for the state park. He was also certified as a master gardener. And whereas Dr. Jackson was a former representative of the Putnam County Homeless Coalition. And whereas Dr. Jackson was also a recipient of the Ring of Honor Award during the Putnam County African American Hall of Fame celebration. Now, therefore, I, Terrell O'Hill, Mayor of the City of Palaka, together with the members of the Palaka City Commission, recognize Dr. Jackson for a life well lived and extend our condolences to the family, friends, and his church family on the passing of this great leader. And witness whereof I have here and to set my hand and cause to be affixed the official seal of the City of Palaka this 13th day of May in the year of our Lord, 2021.
So move.
Thank you.
Motion on the floor in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both motion carries unanimously. We'll take a brief moment of silence for Bishop Jackson. Everyone, please bring their heads. Thank you. And just to say a little bit about Bishop, Bishop took on the task at the caring center of really dealing with people that are often referred to as the least of these, but he dealt with citizens in this community, gave them a sense of dignity, gave them a home when other folks would have basically turned their backs on them. And so we appreciate Bishop filling in the gaps that was left in this community. There was very little done in the county as a whole as related to homelessness. Still a very significant issue that we have to address within this community. And Bishop combated it head on, provided a facility on the corner of 11th and Main, which gave housing and support services to people within the community. And so we just want to thank Bishop and give a round of applause for the work and the labor of his love throughout the course of his life. Anything else from the commission?
I would like to, you know, he left the true legacy behind, and I would like for the City of Palaka to take on the initiative of looking into our homelessness. I know previously we talked about starting a, some kind of coalition for that. I would like for us to continue to move forward so that we can address this serious problem that we have within our city.
I too share the same sentiment as Commissioner Campbell, and I just want to give his family my condolences.
Okay. And so we've, we've been in conversations with Kim Parish and other organizations within the community. Ms. Griffith, Ms. Tucker, Mr. Holmes, while actually done some, some research, some initial legwork as a really, in order to look at what we're doing for homelessness. And I think it's definitely something we better look at on a daily basis because we're all one incident away from being in the same position. All right, moving the agenda at this point, we will go toward declaration of day of mourning. Ms. Krantz.
Thank you, ma'am. The Palaka City Commission declared a day of mourning, May 7, to recognize, honor, and celebrate the life of Apostle Dr. Elijah T. Jackson.
This was done on the day of his, of his memorial service, and we just wanted to make sure we give that special recognition as well. Next up is our proclamation for Peace Officers Memorial Day.
The proclamation reads as follows. Whereas Congress, Congress has designated May 15 as the Peace Officers Memorial Day in which, in the week in which May 15 falls as the National Police Week. And whereas the members of the Palaka City Police Department play a central role in safeguarding the rights and freedoms of all citizens of Palaka. And whereas it is important that all citizens know and understand the duties, responsibilities, hazards, and sacrifices of their law enforcement agency. And the members of our law enforcement agency recognize their duty to serve the people by self guarding life and property, by protecting them against violence and disorder, and protecting the innocent against deception and the weak against oppression. And whereas the men and women of the law enforcement agency of the City of Palaka Police Department unceasingly provide a public service. Now, therefore, I, Terrell O'Hill, Mayor of the City of Palaka, together with the members of the Palaka City Commission, hereby endorse and proclaim May 15, 2021, as Peace Officers Memorial Day, and encourage our citizens to join us in commemorating our law enforcement officers, both past and present, who by their faithful and loyal devotion to their responsibilities, have rendered dedicated service to their communities, and in so doing, have established for themselves an enviable and enduring reputation for preserving the rights and security for all citizens, and honoring our law enforcement officers who, through their courageous deeds, have paid the ultimate sacrifice and service to their community or have become disabled in the performance of the duty. And let us recognize and pay respect to the survivors of all fallen heroes. And witness whereof I have here and to set my hand and cause to be affixed the official seal of the City of Palaka this 13th day of May in the year of our Lord, 2021.
So move.
Thank you.
Motion on the floor in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both motion carries unanimously. Before we move on to a recognition of our firefighter and police officers of the year, we've got a new, we've got a new person to the City of Palaka's family. We want to make sure we introduce her at this time. Mr. Holmes.
I'm very pleased to announce.
Put your mic on.
I'm very pleased to announce that we have a new hire who has assumed the duties of HR Director. She is Ms. Virginia Jones. She's a local lady who has been in the Palaka area for quite some time. She is a military veteran who began her educational career in 1982, where she received a business administration certificate. But she continued her education all the way up through 2020, where she received her masters and business, masters of business administration. So over that period of time, I think that she, she acquired an associate's degree, a bachelor's degree, and then finally a master's degree, which I think speaks to her dedication and her perseverance and her, her desire to improve. her perseverance and her desire to improve herself educationally. We acquired her, I won't say stole, but we acquired her from St. John's River State College where they thought very highly of her and her abilities. And she was described in some of the recommendations that I received as being the go to person, the person who would get the job done, the person who never said, I can't do it, the person who would take on any responsibility. Before that, she had spent 14 years in Harris Manufacturing in Greencove and only moved from that job when they moved all of their bookkeeping, all of their facilities, all of their administrative facilities from Greencove to, was it Ohio? Man? Same thing. And only kept their sales force here. So we were very happy. She jumped right in. I walked up to her office the very first day. There were four piles of trash already in the floor by nine o'clock. I think she was a little surprised by what she found, but she moved, she worked right, didn't even take lunch the first couple of days. I don't know if she had since or not. But so far from what I've seen, she is going to be a great addition to the City of Palaka. And I'd like everyone to welcome her, please. Ms. Virginia Jones.
I guess we'll let you escape without any words. So again, just again, welcome, welcome aboard. We look forward. Next up is our firefighter of the year award and the recognition of the police officer of the year.
Good evening, Mayor, city commissioners. The veteran of foreign war post 3349 would like to welcome, would like to thank the City of Palaka and introduce our famine of the year for 2020. My quartermaster, Gerald Sholder, will present the award. My senior vice will take pictures, Bruce Howe. And again, I want to thank all the members of the City Fire Company for an outstanding job during the COVID-19. Again, we cannot do without these people, and I think they do a wonderful job.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
It's always a pleasure for me to present these awards to our public servants. Our first award of tonight will be to the firefighter of the year. And these are given to us by their departments. Firefighter David Zimmer joined the Palaka Fire Department in January of 2011. He came from the ranks of a local volunteer station, and he brought some experience with him to the job. And by November of 2018, Engineer Zimmer had been promoted to the rank of engineer. David had worked in the construction industry for most of his adult life and has a working knowledge of construction methods, heavy machinery, and other tools that we benefited from here at our department. His work ethic is second to none, and he is always happy to lend a helping hand. David's become a respected leader here at our department. For all these reasons and more, I believe he's deserving of this reward and recommend him without reservation. Should you have any questions? To discuss anything further, please get in touch with me, Chris Taylor.
Thank you, Chief. That's how it wrote, that's how I read it.
Is a, my great respect. A special recognition and highest praise for alertness, personnel courage, and ever efficient guardianship of life and property. We like to present this certificate of appreciation and plaque to Engineer David Zimmer. Thank you very much, Engineer. Yes, sir.
We're going to honor the policeman of the year for 2020. Chief Shaw, again, I want to go back and thank the police officers for the fine duty they do in the community and for what they've done through COVID-19. Again, we will honor our policeman of the year.
Lieutenant Scott Mast, come on up, please. The command staff of the Palaka Police Department would like to nominate Lieutenant Scott Mast for the selection of the Veterans of Foreign Wars Public Servant Award. Lieutenant Mast has been employed with the Palaka Police Department for more than 16 years, and during that time has served his community in a positive light. Lieutenant Mast has proven to be a valued asset to the City of Palaka. During his time with the department, Lieutenant Mast has reached the rank of administrative lieutenant and is active in all new officer training. Lieutenant Mast also takes on the roles of running the field training program, managing equipment for all sworn officers, and assisting with the IT division. Lieutenant Mast's hard work and dedication is evident on a daily basis. Lieutenant Mast's ability to multitask is remarkable and proves that it is possible to be efficient while juggling several agendas at that same time. Lieutenant Mast's willingness to go above and beyond, combined with his ability to blend as a team member, has proven to be contagious. Those that have the opportunity to work with Lieutenant Mast oftentimes report he makes the difficult aspects of law enforcement seem simple. Lieutenant Mast has been an important part of our agency and continues to be a mentor to younger officers within the department. It's without a doubt that Lieutenant Mast's devotion, sacrifice, and attention to detail make the difference. His professionalism and team support truly reflect the work ethic and drive towards law enforcement. Lieutenant Mast is truly an asset to our team, and for this reason, we would like to recognize him for the Veterans of Foreign Wars Public Servant Award. Sincerely, Jason Shaw, Chief of Police. Get to read one more thing. In grateful recognition of unyielding adherence to the highest ideals of law enforcement in maintaining, preserving, and protecting the lawful rights of all citizens. We present this certificate of appreciation to Lieutenant Scott Mast and this plaque for the Palaka Police Officer of the Year.
Thank you, Lieutenant. Appreciate it.
Let's give a round of applause to BFW, post 3349. Commander Donald, for the work that you guys do. And again, we just appreciate everything you do in this community. And also give a round of applause for our officer firefighter of the year. Again, thank you, guys. Next up, item number four, recognition swearing in our new firefighters and firefighter promotions. Chief Taylor.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor, commission. Thanks for recognizing these guys tonight. So the first group, we have four guys who have just completed their rookie year. They've studied to show themselves approved. They've done a good job, and they continue to learn and be part of the crews. I'd like to invite them up now so we can do an oath and a penning by their family members. Looks like we're missing one, so we'll start out with firefighter Alec Dowell, firefighter Mike Vogel, and firefighter Jeremy Granger. Do you have your family members in?
Yes, sir.
Can you have them come up now? If you guys in, kind of squeeze in over here so we can get on the mic.
Thank you all. We'll ask you all to please raise your right hand and put your hand on your Bible if you have one or brought one with you. And if you would, repeat after me and raise your right hand. I'm going to ask each of you to please say your name when I say aye. Aye. Please state your name. One after another.
Aye, how was y'all?
Aye, Jeremy Granger.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemn swear.
You can say collectively now. Or affirm.
Or affirm.
That I will support, protect, and defend.
I will support, protect, and defend.
The Constitution and government of the United States.
Constitution and government of the United States.
And of the state of Florida.
And of the state of Florida.
And of the charter and ordinances.
And of the charter of ordinances.
Of the City of Palaka.
Of the City of Palaka.
That I am duly qualified to hold office.
That I am duly qualified to hold office.
Under the Constitution of the state.
Under the Constitution of the state.
And that I will well and faithfully perform.
That I will well and faithfully perform.
The duties of firefighter.
The duties of firefighter.
On which I am now about to enter.
On which I am now about to enter.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Welcome aboard, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Unnecessary. Thank you, guys. If we can have the next group come up and promotions. Again, commissioners, these are the guys who have just promoted. So we have a new captain, a new lieutenant, and a new engineer. It'll be Captain Philip Smith, Lieutenant Kenny Reed, and Engineer John Foley. These guys have done a great job. They've studied, passed the test, and did everything that was required of them, and they've done a great job representing the city and the department. I just thank you guys for recognizing.
All righty, gentlemen, if you would, please raise your right hand and place your hand on your Bible, please. And when I say aye, please say your name one by one by one. Aye. And now you can repeat after me in unison. Do solemnly swear. Or affirm that I will support, protect, and defend the Constitution and government of the United States and of the state of Florida and of the charter and ordinances of the City of Palaka. That I am duly qualified to hold office under the Constitution of the state and that I will well and faithfully perform the duties of my promotion on which I am now about to enter. So help me God. Thank you, guys. Congratulations.
Thank you again for recognizing these guys.
And again, chief, thank you to you and to our firefighters for the great job that they do.
Thank you, sir.
All right, Captain Smith, if you could smile now. Next up, we have a presentation by Wealth Watchers. We're going to take a couple of seconds to let everybody get situated. Ms. Davis, welcome.
Let's bring this down for short people. Good afternoon, Mayor Hill, commissioners.
Good afternoon.
Thank you for having me. I'm Carrie Davis, president and CEO of Wealth Watchers Incorporated, and we're located at 5310 Lenox Avenue in Jacksonville, Florida. And because we have some new commissioner members since the last time I've stood up here, Wealth Watchers is a housing counseling and community development organization located in Jacksonville, but we serve rural and urban areas in northeast Florida, southeast, southwest, and central Georgia. And we are no stranger to the City of Palaka. We've enjoyed a great relationship over the last five years, mostly focusing on housing, everything from mortgage assistance to assisting residents with applying for home repair services through USDA. And also during the recovery of the hurricane, we came down and did simultaneous events all throughout the county with Rebuild Florida and American Red Cross to ensure that the residents of Palaka were not ignored or forgotten as it relates to those resources. So now I'm excited to talk about two new opportunities and ways that we intend to partner with the City of Palaka. Worked very closely with Mayor Hill to identify some strategies that he was working on as it relates to housing. And as a result of that, we identified the North Side Community, which is North Sixth Street through North 14th Street. Did I get that right, Mayor Hill, this time?
I think it goes to 20th.
Okay, 20th. However, so what we're going to be doing, we were able to secure some funds through USDA Rural Development, their housing preservation program. So we will be offering homeowner occupied homeowners services to the residents and homeowners in that particular area. We will utilize those funds and leverage those funds with Northeast Florida Community Action Agency. And we're hoping that the county ship program will also participate so that we can leverage the most out of all of those resources. Each home will be able to, will be able to use from 5,000 to 11,000. And owner occupied rehab will focus on everything from roofs, plumbing. Each of the homes will be inspected prior to the work as well as after their work to ensure quality and workmanship. As a part of that program, we're also bringing another program to the City of Palaka, which you see the flyer there, and it's our coffee program. It's a construction training program. One of the things that we want to do with the owner occupied program is ensure that there is a local economic impact. And so all of our supplies, we're hoping to hire local subcontractors. We want to do everything locally. Our construction training program is open to young people ages 16 to 24, and it's a 12-week program. Five of those weeks is a paid internship where they will get on the job training. And what we're looking to do is to utilize them and teach them the construction trades because as many of you know, there's a shortage, not just in material, but also in human resources. So this is a great opportunity for young people who are interested in construction in Jacksonville where our program is based. We work very closely with the unions. And so several of our students have been, they've been hired on with our local unions and our And so several of our students have been, they've been hired on with our local unions that are currently going through pre-apprenticeship programs. So just wanted to make you guys aware of the program and what we're doing. We are going to have registration starting this Saturday from 10 to 1 at Hope Plaza. And thanks again to Mayor Hill for his hospitality. We've, I've provided Sunny the flyers and the information in terms of if anyone cannot come to the event on Saturday, and they would like more information, they can call our office, and that number is 904-265-4736. Or they can email us at info@wealthwatchersfl.com. Thank you so much for the opportunity. And once again, we look forward to continuing our relationship with the city of Palaca.
Any questions from the Commissioners at this point?
Just want to ask the things that they need to bring. I know that they would need identification, but.
Absolutely. So they would need to bring their identification. Utility bill would be great if they have it. If they have a mortgage statement, that will be good for them as well. Also, 60 days of income. And we'll be able to print deeds and things of that nature. We can look that up. But the most important things will be their ID, their mortgage statement, and 60 days of income. And if there's anything they don't have, we'll work with them to get in. And if we have any seniors that can't make the event, as long as we are aware of them, we can actually go to them. And of course, still, you know, practicing COVID safety. My staff probably going to kill me for that one. Is this being recorded? Oh, they're going to kill me for that one. But no, we will, if there are seniors that cannot come out, we'll be more than happy to go to them.
Any other questions from the Commissioners?
Well, yeah, I just got a comment. I just want to, the Commissioner of Boreham, I just want to commend you for the program and what it can do for a community that is in such a need. And also to help with some of the needed trades that we have. We don't have a lot of people who can do carpentry work or do plumbing, things of that nature. And so we have a lot of shortages around here, so they have to recruit from Jacksonville, Gainesville, St. Augustine, or what have you, just to get people here to help with building new homes in our area. So I just want to commend you for that. But over the last five years, have we had a lot of, over, in terms of, what would you say the contribution has been over the past five years in terms of rewarding people? The home improvement, grant information, I mean, grant monies or whatever, or have you, were you working, were you developing, or were you awarding during this five-year period?
Oh, no, no. Through Mayor Hill, Commissioner Rufus, we've actually seen quite a bit of impact, and we do measure that, for instance, with our Mortgage Assistance Program. And I could provide you numbers allocated a date, but I can share with you that we were able to prevent foreclosures as well as to assist some homeowners with their USDA loans that, in some cases, they thought they had to pay it off. And we were able to assist them with getting that extended, especially when we brought in Rebuild Florida as well as the American Red Cross, because what we did with that particular program, American Red Cross had funds that were available to residents based on a disaster that they were unable to reach out to. And so we were able to bring Red Cross here along with Rebuild Florida. If you remember when Rebuild Florida put together their list of counties, they put them together in tiers, and Putnam County wasn't even on their list.
Right, okay.
And so we were able to persuade them to add Putnam County to the list. And what I understand from Mayor Hill is that there've been several individuals that have had their homes totally rebuilt. So we do need to do a better job of capturing those impacts, because I think it tells for a compelling story of how you can leverage public and private partnerships and make an impact in the community.
I think the other piece is with Rebuild Florida, when you go back and you look at it, the impact wasn't just in the city limits, it was county-wide. Because at that point, there wasn't a coordination of services for Hurricane Matthew and Irma relief. And so we actually were able to partner with local agencies as well and create a coalition that actually impacted this entire county. Aside from that, when Ms. Davis came in and we did the USDA home loans for seniors, with the grants for seniors.
Yes.
You had 230 seniors who came in and applied for those grants. We were able to successfully dwell over 30 homes at that point, based upon certain qualifications that were in place, without any financial impact to the, to the wardees, just meeting simple criteria that was in place. But also, there were other folks who came out of that situation who had the ability to gain additional resources to help improve their homes as well. And so I just want to commend Ms. Davis and Wealth Watchers, although they're a Jacksonville-based organization, they're an organization that has a heart for Palaca. And anytime they provide their programs, they provide a vision for this community as well. And I just want to personally thank you and Wealth Watchers for the work that you do and for your impacts right here in Palaca and Putnam County. So again, thank you very much for all that you do.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the Commission? Again. Moving forward, presentation, youth recognition, Pastor Mulberry, Chaplain Mulberry.
Thank you, Mayor, Commissioners, City Manager. Just wanted to just highlight these two young men here. I have the privilege to serve as a district mentor for the Putnam County School District. And these two young men, I ran across my path, I think, maybe a year or so ago. Kind of got lost track of my time with that situation going on. But anyhow, certainly, these two young men have been bright, certainly instrumental, very tentative to their education. The one young man on my left, Michael McGully, he's a seventh grader at Price Middle School. And he's been one of my most improved students who have strived consistently to try to do and be all that he can in the classroom and beyond. Certainly, he, as a seventh grader, has some aspirations. He's desiring to own his own construction business someday. So I'm pushing him in that direction. What are you putting yourself in that place for construction at that age? So that when they get there, they'll have an idea what's going on. And Anthony McCaskill, he's a fifth grader at James A. Long. And certainly, he is one of, he was one of the Students of the Month, I believe, this year. And he's a very positive, kind, and compassionate young man about his work. He does, he takes his education very, very seriously. And someday, likewise, he's aspiring to follow the legacy of his family-owned business. And so certainly, I just wanted to kind of highlight those young men because it is necessary, and I challenge those of us who understand to grab a hold to these young people and see what you can do for them, to help them along the way. It is very, it's a challenge, but yet we who know a little bit better and understand a little bit better can help them further their understanding along this way. So it is necessary for us to pour back into the lives of these young people. You never know what can become of them. So I thank you for the opportunity just to be able to highlight those young men. No questions.
Let's salute those two young men. Pastor Mulberry, I want to thank you as well for just taking the time out to pour into our most precious resources in this community, which is the young people. And so it takes a village to raise a child, and it also takes positive adults, providing a foundation necessary for them to succeed and to let them know that they can achieve whatever they dream. And so we definitely appreciate you and the efforts there, and thank you for, again, providing us with those recognitions. Next up, Police Athletic League Youth Directors Programs, Chief Shaw.
Thank you, Mayor, Commissioners, if you guys would. Von Che, could you stay here with me? Can the rest of you stand in front of the dice, please?
All right, it's my pleasure, my honor, to be able to present to you today just one of our best programs, our biggest programs, our only year-round program we have for our PAL. Our Police Athletic League does a lot, but we whisper through by gathering as much kids as we can and being able to do positive things in the community. But every so often, we have to stand up and scream out when the kids stand up and take ownership and acknowledge and become leaders and want to aspire to be leaders in the community. That's something we have to make sure that we let the community know and express that. There's great things going on in the city of Palaca. First, I want to start out with giving acknowledgement to Captain Williams and Travis Crumpton for working with the coaches and players of our 12-and-under and 14-and-under basketball teams who went to the state championship. I am honored to say our 14-and-under basketball team finished second in the state championship. And I believe we may have some individuals on Zoom here today. I know we have our executive director, Lisa Thomas, Lita Thomas, on Zoom. So I do want to, before we go in. Oh, she's back. Oh, okay, she made it. I do want to say, one, again, congratulations to them, and thank you to those who put in such hard work to make sure we make that happen. Now, I want to give a moment. I want to have Ms. Von Shell offer introduce our youth here today and just say a little bit about them. And then I want the youth to say something, and then I want to present a video for you to show you exactly what they're doing in our community.
Thank you. Thank you for having us. Oftentimes, we do hear a lot about, I didn't know there was a PAL program, or what do you all do? I'm Vice President of the PAL program and have been working for many, many years to provide programs and mentoring for our youth. Today, we have Trenton Williams and Melissa Thomas, which have been pretty much lifelong PAL children, simply because they have been around, because their parents have to be around. We do have many that are on Zoom. I've seen several of them on there. So we have several kids that are attending. These two youth have taken the responsibility of putting together a brief synopsis of what is PAL. Y'all be telling about PAL and some of the PAL programs so that we are aware of what we have here in Palaca to offer through our PAL's program. Without further information, Melissa, you can take the mic.
Hello, my name is Melissa, and I'm here to inform you about PAL. PAL started with a Bing, or Arthur W. to be more precise. A youth game in New York City harassing storekeepers and generally making life miserable in the neighborhood caused a problem that established the concept of the Police Athletic League. In 1914, New York City Police Commissioner Arthur Woods began a social movement that came to be known as the National Association of Police Athletic and Activities League. PAL is a youth mentoring program that uses civic, educational, athletic, and recreational activities to create understanding and trust between youth and law enforcement. PAL has different programs that provides leadership opportunities for youth to be a part of the process of establishing positive relationships with law enforcement, while also allowing them to have their voice heard. PAL is also the largest youth enforcement program. PAL is not only a local program, but we are involved with Florida PAL and National PAL. PAL is important to me because it gives me many opportunities to learn and experience new things, and it also helped me to become a better person and learn new ways of thinking, such as the way I act, speak, and most importantly, how to respect law enforcement. Overall, PAL has had a great impact on my life and has helped me become a better person. Through PAL, we are involved in the PAL Mentor Program. It is a program that helps to develop positive relationships between at-risk and high-risk youth ages eight through 17, a law enforcement, with law enforcement professionals, while helping youth development, while helping you develop protective factors to buffer the impact of violent and high-crime neighborhoods, poverty, and negative peer influences. The newest addition to our local PAL program is YDP. The State of Florida Association of the Police Athletic Lead and Activities established Youth Directors Program, YDP, in 1998 after members expressed a need to provide leadership training and a need to involve youth in PAL program discussions. Any youth 11 to 18 years old can participate in this Youth Directions, Directors Program. YDP helps to plan and facilitate the Disney Conference. Especially thank you to my family and community for helping me raise $675 to cover my costs for the leadership conference. I'm looking forward to June 2021 Youth Leadership Conference because I have a chance to meet and interact with other youth leaders from around Florida, attend leadership breakout sections, explore and interact with law enforcement officers from Florida PAL. My grandmother and Miss Reese both have Florida PAL license tags through the DMV. Please feel free to join them and get a tag. A part of your tag or note each year will go towards Florida PAL. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Trenton Williams, and I'm also a PAL kid. So PAL has multiple sports programs such as basketball, basketball, flag football, and track. And also has a summer camp that is, over the summer, grades K through 12, K through 8, can come out to summer PAL and enjoy time with, like, summer camp PAL kids.
Ms. Thomas, would you like to come up and say a little bit about the youth conference?
Hello, everyone. Hello, Commissioner, to everyone on Zoom. Yes, the, the State of Florida PAL, as was mentioned earlier, host a annual conference at Disney. This gives the youth the opportunity to actually facilitate, this is part of their leadership training. They run the conference. When the adults attend, the coordinators, we sit back and watch and watch them just run this whole entire weekend of activities. They do learn, they go through sessions, but they also get to have fun as well. They get to go and visit throughout the park. So this is a great opportunity. This year was a little challenging for us, only because we, during the pandemic, we weren't able to raise the funds that we normally would raise. So the youth had to reach out and ask for sponsorships to help fund this activity for them. So this year, we are only taking 12 youth to this conference, but at any given year, we would love to take a busload of kids down to this conference. So to anyone who would like to help these PAL kids, please feel free to reach out to us. We would greatly appreciate all of your support. Thank you.
Okay, I also want to acknowledge our mentors that are here, Ryan.
Ryan, he's a mentee, one of our mentees.
Okay, Ryan, mentee. You gonna say the rest if you want me to finish?
Well, you know to him as.
Well, you know to him as Ryan. Okay, I'm sorry, I got really nervous then. We do have here with Melissa and Trenton, Ryan, which is one of our mentees and one of our, two of our awesome mentors. We call him Bishop. That's Mr. Ferrin and Ms. Money.
All right. At last, I wanted to show you some of the things that was done to go off and was put together as far as programs to go off and help raise those funds. And it was done by one of the PAL mentoring kids, by Trenton Williams. Sonny, can you play that video for me, please?
PAL stands for Police Athletic League and is sponsored by your local police department. PAL is made up of several different programs geared to help children, such as basketball, soccer, and track. Last but not least, PAL Mentoring, Summer Camp, and YDP. As a proud member of PAL and its Youth Directors Program, which focuses on helping teens develop leadership skills, I need your help with going to 2021 Team Summit at Disney World. As a result of the pandemic, I was not able to conduct a normal fundraising. I need $675 to cover my room, meals, conference registration, and park visits. I have been given a deadline of April 15th to reach half of the money. And I have been given a deadline of April 30th to reach the whole goal. I look forward to participating in the Team Summit and thank you for your support.
So I wanted to show you that video because that was part of the initiative that the kids took on to raise that funding. I'm proud to say that all the funding for them to be able to attend this year's conference has been raised. So please give them all a round of applause. Again, I'd state, there's certain programs that we don't always get a chance and sometimes that's at the fault of us that we don't toot our horns loud enough. But when the kids step up and demonstrate, show leadership, we need to get up and scream out loud to let them know how proud we are of them to keep moving forward. Congratulations. Thank you.
Again, it's always an honor to have PAL here. I think PAL has a special place in the hearts of folks on the dais and also Commissioner Borum, who I watch referee many PAL games and many of us, Coach Jones, who, Commissioner Jones, who coached a state championship team. Commissioner Campbell, who's sat on the board of directors for PAL. I think I saw Reno Fales here earlier. Have Reno Fales step in here for me. So when we talk about the history of this organization as he comes up, we'll be remiss if we don't recognize Mr. Fales and his contribution to the resurgence of PAL over the years. Reno? CRL? That's fine. I'll still make the comment. Reno Fales, when working with the Palaca Police Department, secured a weed and seed grant, a five-year grant for a million dollars, which created, revital, which brought the PAL program back up. That's fine. Chief Shaw, at that time, became the first PAL officer, full-time PAL officer of that program, and later became Executive Director and also holds regional offices and state offices with PAL throughout. And the program has emerged into just an awesome program and a staple for youth within this community. And without the vision of Reno Fales, who was our first Executive Director, that program would not have had the life at this point that it has. And I'm just so proud to see the board take the bull by the horn and continue to take the program to new levels. And again, congratulations to you, Chief, and also Madam Executive Director and to everyone who works with our youth for what they do. Bishop, I think you have 12 jobs. I saw you at the Jacksonville Jaguars draft party doing security. You're everywhere. And so we just appreciate having young people who can, who are committed to doing things and we just appreciate your thing. Reno, do you just stick your head in, wave your hand for, again, thank you for your vision many, many years ago. Was it about 15 years now, Chief? How long, how long has it been? Well, so again, 2005. Thank you. 60. Thank you for your vision. And again, just thank you to PAL Florida that you do with our young people. And congrats to our young folks for all that you do. Next up, public comments. Public comments will be limited to three minutes. Anyone here wishing to speak during public comment, there are yellow speakers cards in the back of the room. If you want to speak during public comments, please fill out a card and come forward. If there's a specific agenda item that you want to speak on, please go ahead and speak up. Mark that item on your public comments. We're going to go ahead and open the floor for public comments. Public comments will be limited to three minutes. Three minutes, no actual, we take no topics of discussion. If you are inside Berlin and you want to make comments, please do so in the YouTube chat function or dial 386-329-0100, extension zero, so that you can be recognized. I have one caller on the line. We're old school. It's not rotary dial.
Mayor, we have Pam Garris on line one. She'd like to speak on ordinance 2105.
She's gonna have to wait till we call ordinance 2105. So if you can have her hold until we get to item number six, and she can speak then. Or if she wants to speak during general comments, she can go ahead and speak now. So just go ahead and let her speak now. Are you logged on? Looks like we're not. Ms. Garris?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am. You can go ahead. You got three minutes.
Okay. Thank you for allowing me to speak. I'm Pam Garris. I live in Flagler Beach, Florida. My family owns commercial property since 1978 at 110 Highway 19 South in the city limits of Palaca. My comments will refer to ordinance 21-05, amending section 94-261 of the碼 code of the city as it pertains to the location of parking facilities. The reasoning for no parking pads in historic areas except for extreme exceptions is, one, it is against current city codes, which state there is to be no parking on the right-of-way, which is the grassy area between the sidewalk and the curb, which is the accepted tradition in historic districts and other deed-restricted neighborhoods. This is an adherence to accepted aesthetic traditions for the beauty of the landscape, the standards in the, protect the air, the values of the area and the properties therein, and any less practices make these valuable areas look like a trailer park, actually. Covering the right-of-ways with parking pads obstructs the repair of sewer lines, utilities, or cables laid in the right-of-way. In the future, taxpayers in the city should not have to pay for a luxury parking spot for individuals to seek one when their property meets no special exception. This should apply for the entire city. Historic cities, for example, St. Augustine, do not allow parking of any kind in the right-of-way. They have granted reserved parking on the curb in front of residences when a special exception is made, not in the right-of-way. These accepted norms in landscape design are legally protected by the city codes for a reason, to preserve the beauty and values of neighborhoods and to make a city beautiful thus desired by prospective buyers and potential taxpayers of the homes who will bring economic prosperity to cities like Palaca, which greatly need it. The right-of-way where the pads would be located is public property and therefore, if allowed to remain, is legally eligible for use by any citizen or visitor. It is not the sole property of the home which it fronts. On 313 Emmett Street, mistakes were made. They can be easily corrected. City official Jonathan Griffith authorized for cease construction to provide the labor and materials for personal parking pads. And this was a misuse of St. John's River Water Management District's generous grant for water drainage improvement in the South historic district. The said parking pad does not improve drainage, was not approved by the Historic Preservation Board, or permitted by the city. It's a perk for being a St. John's River Water Management District employee or being president of the South historic neighborhood association. Either way, this is the wrong message to send to your tax base. Remove the parking pad and the misappropriated street brick, which belonged to the city of Palaca, which surrounds it. An individual purchases a home in a historic neighborhood in any cities the ordinances like Palaca has. And people know that there are rules and special regulations in historic neighborhoods.
Ten seconds.
People buy a historic area, they seek out those neighborhoods because they are held to a higher standard and upper value grades accordingly more than other areas, since codes are strictly followed. The aesthetics of a historic neighborhood are strictly protected and the result is proper, authentic preservation of the home's beauty and higher property. This is what we should all support. We need to make the correct decision on this parking pad area.
Your time, your time's up. So you.
Thank you for allowing me to speak.
All right, thank you. Next up, Ms. Laura Evans. You're not going to be able to speak after the report. You can speak now. Vicky Duke. Jacob Spell. Would you come forward, give your name and address for the record?
My name is Jacob Spell. I live at 5019 Crowell Avenue. And I have a question for the mayor. Is it, is it not customary that whenever government or state officials visit the city, our invitation is granted to them to meet with all the governor, government officials of that city or county?
In my six years, it has been, except for this week.
I can't understand you. I speak a little louder.
So in the six years that I've been sitting on this dais, I've always gotten an invitation as well as this commission. And we've been asked to bring folks with us. And so this is the first time that we haven't been invited.
I noticed in the paper that I saw photos and I didn't see any of the city officers or the commission attending the meeting. Is it a common practice that the meeting, of the makeup of the city council wasn't important enough to be invited to talk to the governor? What was the situation as to why the officials wasn't invited? And I would like very much, Mayor, hopefully, and I hope you take it as asking your intelligent question, I would like an intelligent answer, please.
I don't know if I can give you the answer right now, but I can tell you, just stick around for a little bit and I'll give you my opinion. You've got three minutes as it relates to this topic. Trust me, it'll be one that I talk about.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Mr. Vickers.
Good evening. Ask You Vickers, 207 North 18th Street, Palaca. It's been something I've been, I was here last discussing, didn't get an answer about it. And I said, there's numbers on it. I had spoken to some commissioners about this problem, but nobody can give me an answer. We are charging residential people for the containers they use to garbage. We are charging the commercial people for the same thing. I pay $212, $221 per month for a dumpster that I have no choice about whether I can purchase that dumpster or lease it. I'm leasing a dumpster that you are charging me $221 a month. That's come to $2,600 a year. And 10 years, that's $200,000 for a dumpster that you sit there, you dump. Then I got a fee for water, sewer. Sewer is what? That's treated water, water coming in and water going out? That's a question.
Sewer's the stuff that goes down a sewer drain.
Okay, so I'm getting charged, the water bill is for the water coming in, the sewer is for the water going out. The garbage is for the container set there that you have to, have to pay for. You charge the people here, the residential people, $15 a month, that's $160 a year. In 10 years, that's $160,000. I total it up for the charge that you are charging the resident and commercial people, you're bringing in over a half a million dollars a year. And plus, you get this sales tax that you get all 100% of. I can't see why is it that way. We have no choice. We can purchase these items or lease it from you. I don't think it's right for us to have no choice about what we have and have a right to. We don't have a choice. This is like dictatorship to me. You said, I provide you with this container, but you can't use it unless you give it to me. I can sell it to you, but you won't sell it to me. I lease it to you, but you don't empty the dumpster and clean it clean.
So what's your suggestion?
That has, somebody has to correct this. I've been talking about this for some time. There should be an oversight committee to set and talk about. Nobody talks about these things. It's a thing that nobody talks about. People get their water bill, they don't pay attention to what's on the bill. They pay the bill and keep going. Nobody, I brought this attention to somebody. They have no idea about it. They say, oh, I paid $60 for the sand to come out. Yeah, but you paying a fee every month for it to sit there to be dumped. We can't provide our own containers. This is not fair for us as a, see, taxes is for what reason? We have a tax. Tax is an investment on our future to pay for certain things. We pay for government, like army, armed forces, police, health departments, fire departments, all these things here. That's an investment we putting into. That's what we do. Our investments should be, when we need it, we should be able to get it. When we have a system here that's broken, nobody says anything about it.
Fifteen seconds.
Okay, I don't have no comments and no reply about nothing.
Well, it's kind of like when you invest in, when you flush your toilet, you hope that something goes down, right?
No.
So you invest in those pipes where it goes to.
No, no.
You make sure that all those other things are replaced.
Sir, you've been sarcastic about this. We ain't talking about no toilet being flushed. We talking about something else here. The toilet being flushed is not what I came here about.
Mr. Vickers, I talk to you all day long. You know, I like talking to you, but.
Yeah, but see, talking to me and not getting any results is not worth nothing.
It's, if we talk about this topic, then we can get a solution to the topic. But we can't talk about the topic all night while we're in public, while we're in public comment. But I will talk to you and I'll address your comment.
Anybody has a comment about it?
So what I hear you asking, Mr. Vickers, is maybe forming a utilities committee of made of public residence of the city of Palaca, business owners as well as residents? Is that something you're suggesting?
Yeah.
Okay, and in reference to the container, you're asking to be able to purchase one versus leasing.
Not I, it's not about me. It's about.
As a business owner.
As people, the whole city. We're not, I'm not talking about just me, this whole city. We have the business and residential part. I think these are things you can come up and address. We don't have a say-so about it. You all just do what you want to do and nobody says anything.
So, so again, to be able to address your concern, you want to have the ability to purchase, have an option.
An option, the ability, that's an option.
Yeah.
Yes, so that's what you're asking?
Yes.
So that we could have, okay, thank you.
Okay. And I'm still coming to see you. So, time's up. Next up, Ms. Davis.
Just keep your name and address as you come forward.
Um, my name is Aloha Shantae Davis, and my address is 208 Holly Lane, Palaca. I was born and raised here, I returned here. I'm happy to be here, I love this city. I just wanted to talk about two things at this particular meeting, and the first one being what Mr. Spell announced. I represent a huge family that is Davis's, Denigals, Bakers', and we read the paper, we don't have a clear understanding of what's going on, but we're very, very concerned about the diversity or the lack thereof in this city. We do understand that particular times that there be events in place and things like that of that nature that happen, but we are absolutely disappointed in 2021 that the governor would come to this city and no one at our level of city officials, including our mayor, who is the mayor of all mayors, that there was no information associated with it. So I don't want to make any assumptions about that, but I just wanted to relate from my family to this forum that this is a huge concern. We want diversity and inclusion, and we are not registering complaints without solutions. This is something that we're very, very concerned with. And the second thing is, we'd like to get an understanding of how this city actually operates as far as the historical buildings here, the ones that are in use, the ones that are not in use, and just everything about this town and how it looks, returning to the city. I've visited during the interim, but returning to this city and just seeing that there's a lot of focus on particular areas that don't include people that look like me. So I just wanted to say that to you all.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else here for public comment at this time? You bring your card up for us.
Just give your name and address, thank you.
If anyone else wants to speak, you have to fill out a speaker's card for us.
Good evening. Um, I want to piggyback on some of the subjects that-
Just give your name and address.
I'm James Austin, I'm from Forest Glen, 700. I think it was disrespectful for the governor to come to Palaca and not meet with the mayor and the rest of the board members that was not invited. I think it was planned, and I think it's an insult. I'm asking that you guys get in contact with the governor, and I'd like to see a public statement to handle this situation, because on the internet, there's been issues, there's been problems and a star confusion, and this right here was just something that was upsetting to me. I want to applaud you guys for staying professional, but we're going to be your voice on this one. We want answers. I think you guys doing a great job, and I ask that you guys continue to do great, and that's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else here for public comment? Three.
You got something else, Mr. Vickers? We'll give you his twenty seconds. Go ahead, Mr. Vickers. We'll defer, we'll defer to you.
I was listening to what the young gentleman said about getting some answers from the governor. It's not on the governor, it's on the people here who's, who had this meeting. They set forth the meeting and decided who's going to be there, who's not going to be there. It's not the governor, it's the people here.
Anybody, is there any comments in the YouTube chat at this time? We have any comments in the YouTube chat?
Not at this time, Mayor.
Are there any other comments from the floor at this time? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and close public comment. We're going to move the agenda, we'll come back to the subject matter. On the consent agenda, item five, we got items A through, A through I. Are there any items on the consent agenda that you wish to have removed at this time? Seeing none, I entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion that we approve. I'll send that to you. Second.
There's a motion on the floor by Commissioner Campbell, a second by Commissioner McCaskill. Is there any further discussion? Questions called, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, motion carries unanimously. Moving on to item six, item six on the agenda, resolution number 2021 R61, adopting the city of Palaca water treatment plant facility plan for granulated carbon filter installation. Ms. Tucker, Ms. Wiley.
Yes, so this facility plan is one of the steps in the SRF funding process. It contains the plant treatment process, the project description, and this solution as well as other alternatives. This is the second step we've taken in that funding process. The next step will be having the business plan component of this facility plan brought in front of you. Do you have any questions?
Any questions from the commission at this time? Seeing none, Ms. Crank, will you read the resolution for me?
Thank you. Resolution of the city of Palaca, Florida, adopting the city's water treatment plant facility plan for granulated carbon filter installation.
As this is a public hearing, is there any questions from-
Me, I'll get to it in a second.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'll entertain a motion. There's a motion on the floor in a second. We're now open the floor for public hearing. We're now open for public hearing. Anyone here for public hearing, please fill out a yellow speaker's card and come forward. If you are watching this virtually, dial 3863290100, extension zero, or fill out your comments in the YouTube chat function. At this time, we're open for public hearing. Is there anything in the YouTube chat?
Not at this time, Mayor.
Seeing none for the comments, we'll close public hearing. It's time for any further discussion from the commissions.
Question.
Questions called, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Moving on to item six B, ordinance admitting section 94, that's 261, in this particular city of Palaca, as it pertains to the location of parking facilities providing for conflict, provided of stability, providing for correction, as there is provided for an effective date, first reading, Mr. Salman.
This is actually the second reading. We heard this last month, it's a property that needed water and sewer.
And I'm on twenty-
Oh, the parking.
Room parking.
Okay.
Twenty-one oh five.
In the historic district, that is, first reading. The planning board and the historic board met with Don about this, and they, and Don created an ordinance that they looked at and made comments to, and finally approved what was said before you today.
Anything you want to add to that, Mr. Holmes or council as it relates? Okay.
I'm happy to explain if you'd like it, Mr. Mayor.
Just go ahead and explain it for the public so they'll know.
So, the issue first arose in the historic district, South Side Historic District, city of Palaca, I'm sorry, city of Palaca has a ordinance that prohibits the parking of vehicles between the travelway of the street and the sidewalk. Basically, that means the right of way. In the South Side Historic District particularly, there are streets that are only sixteen feet wide, meaning that if a property did not have a driveway and a carport, and if because of lot line issues, side lot line issues, you couldn't get into the backyard where you might have a parking space, then you had no option but to park on the street. During the course of the renovations and the infrastructure improvements in the South Side, Mr. Griffith identified about three properties that would seem to, to be plagued by that issue. No room, our ordinance is prohibit parking in the front yard as well, so you couldn't park in the front yard because of ordinance says not. You can't park in the right of way because our ordinance says not. There was no driveway or carport, so you couldn't park there, and the houses were built so close to the line so that you couldn't get to the backyard even if you could park there. So as to those three, we thought it might be a matter of safety as well as convenience and aesthetics to provide for a parking pad, a, an actual paved parking pad, one pad in the front where the inhabitants might park a vehicle. That met some resistance and some complaints, so we took the issue to first the Historic Preservation Board to ask their thoughts, and then to the Planning Commission to ask their thoughts, and the ordinance that is in front of you is the combined result of those two board hearings, which is that, in essence, for those properties in the city where you have no ability to park either in a parking driveway or, or a garage, and you don't have room to park on the side or to get to the backyard, and you can't park in the front yard, then with a conditional use grant, you could acquire permission to park one vehicle in a parking pad with the material of the pad to be approved by the Historic Preservation Board if it's in the historic district, and otherwise by the Planning Commission. And in the historic preservation, or excuse me, the horse, the South Historic District, we're only aware of three properties where those pads could be placed. So those, that was the, that is the ordinance that was proposed, and as I said, it was vetted by the historic district and vetted by the Planning Commission, and that's what we're for, yeah. Questions from the commission?
Uh, I have one. Uh, can you hear me?
Commissioner, go ahead.
Yes, basically, I mean, I'm just, I just want to know if this, if this consistent with what we normally, I guess you're asking for a conditional use. So now, my question would be, did the Historic Preservation Board pass it?
Yes. They, the Historic Preservation Board recommended the adoption of the ordinance.
Okay.
They actually had added a clause limiting the use of the pad to vehicles, not allowing a parking of boats or trailers or things of that nature, and we incorporated that into the, into the draft.
Okay, and is that in terms of putting tax dollars to private pads, how does that work? I mean, is that consistent with how funding is paid out of the CRA?
Well, I don't think we particularly provided that it be paid for by the, by the city or the CRA at all. I mean, I think this is a homeowner installed improvement, but they have to get approval and permission before they can do it.
Okay.
This wasn't anticipated that the city would pay for those.
Okay, so the city didn't pay anything for it, it was approved by the Historic Preservation Board. Um, I just, I'm just afraid that going forward, that a lot of, the South Historic District has got a pretty nice sized district, and they're one of the larger districts, so if we have other areas that, that's like that, you know, we, we don't want to get in a pickle where we're going to create inconsistencies throughout the community. That's just my concern.
Well, if you, if ma'am, if you read the ordinance, you'll see that there are conditions that you have to meet in order for you to be able to install a pad. It's our belief that there are only three properties in the South Side Historic District that would qualify. One, the parcel has to possess a residential zoning classification. Two, there has to already be a completed residence on site as of the date of the passage of this ordinance. So you can't build a house intentionally boxing yourself in and then try to put a parking pad in the right of way. But three, because of the lot size configuration, et cetera, the lot has no side yard through which vehicular access to the rear yard might be gained. Four, there's no garage or carport in the lot which was designed to accommodate a vehicle and which is accessed by a driveway. Five, no more than one parking space per residential lot may be authorized, but the bench is not to exceed ten feet in width and twenty in length. Surface shall be concrete, brick, or other maestro material as decided by the Board of Zoning Appeals with consideration of being given to the character and architecture of the neighborhood. Six, the parking space providers for shall be used only for the parking of operational motor vehicles, i.e. cars, trucks, or motorcycles, shall not be used for the parking of storage or storage of other equipment, including but not limited to boats, trailers, et cetera. And then if the residential lot is located within the designated historic district, a designated historic district, the request for the parking space shall be presented to the city of Palaca Historic Preservation Board before being considered by the Board of Zoning Appeals. The Historic Preservation Board, made by majority vote, make recommendations to the Board of Zoning Appeals. And then the criteria to be used are those that are set forth in our ordinance as it pertains to conditional use. So you have to, you have to meet some criteria before you could apply for and receive permission to install a pad.
I understand, it's just, you know, we don't have no parking pad police, so, okay. I appreciate it.
The other question is, there's a unique parking restriction in the South Historic District compared to other places within the community, correct? And can you just maybe explain what that is and maybe bring, provide some clarity?
Um, other than, I'm not sure I understand what you're specifically referencing.
So the South Historic District, South Historic District restricts where you can park your vehicle within your drive.
I didn't even know that. They, the only thing that came up in the South Historic District was that they didn't, they, they preferred that the parking be just on the street.
It's also not, they also, it's also regulated that the parking not be in the front of the-
No front yard, yeah, can't be in the front yard.
That's what I was trying to get to.
Yeah, you're right.
That you're restricted from parking in your front yard.
You are.
And that's the, that's the piece that creates the situation where you are.
There's, there's a restriction, as you said, Mayor, front yard parking, parking in the right of way and on side yards, and if, you know, and the three projects, properties that we have identified in the South Historic District are the two on Kirkland and one on Emmett Street. Those are the only three properties we think will fit in this criteria as outlined.
I just wanted to make sure that we, that we at least identified the nuance for that particular area, and I thought that might be helpful to the commission. Any other questions as it relates to this particular issue? Seeing none at this time, we're going to open the floor for public hearing. Is there anyone here for public hearing on this issue? The numbers 3863290100, the extension zero, or in the YouTube chat, please put your information there. If you're here publicly, fill out the yellow speaker's card so that you can be recognized. Is anyone here for public hearing at this time? Do we have anything in the YouTube chat?
Nothing at this time, Mayor.
Just make sure that we note the previous comments or stuff that was taken out of order, the comments that we had previously from Ms. Garris. Seeing nothing else at this time, we'll close public hearing. I'll entertain a motion from the commission as it relates to this particular item. So motion on the floor by Commissioner Campbell, that's a second by Commissioner McCaskill. Is there any further discussion? Seeing no further discussion on this matter, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. We'll see, we'll see everyone back here in a couple weeks for a second reading. Thank you, Mr. Salman. Also, thank you to city manager and council for your work on this matter. Next up is item C, public hearing ordinance annexing and rezoning 2702 Cecile, Palaca, Florida, from Putnam County Residential R1A, the city of Palaca, R1A, case PB 2003, applicant Herbert and Vicky Colbert, second reading. First up, annexation ordinance 2102, second reading, Ms. Crank.
An ordinance of the city of Palaca, Florida, annexing into the corporate limits of the city of Palaca, Florida, certain adjacent territory identified as 2702 Cecile Avenue, Palaca, Florida, 32177, Hudson's addition to Palaca Heights, mapbook one, pages eighteen and nineteen, block four, part of lot four, official records, 482, page fourteen thirty-nine, contiguous to the boundaries of the city of Palaca, Florida, and providing for an effective date.
I entertain a motion. Motion by Commissioner Borvis, second by Commissioner McCaskill. We're now open the floor for public hearing. Is there anyone here for public hearing? 3863290- Three eight six three two nine zero one hundred, extension zero, YouTube chat function, or you can fill out a yellow speaker's card. Is there anything in the YouTube chat?
No, sir, there's nothing at this time.
Seeing nothing there. Any further discussion from the commission? All in favor say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Item B, rezoning ordinance twenty one dash zero four, second reading.
Thank you, mayor. An ordinance of the city of Palaca, Florida, providing that the official zoning map of the city of Palaca, Florida be amended from Putnam County Residential R one A to the city of Palaca, single family residential R one A for the following property, twenty seven oh two Sicil Avenue, Black Florida, three two one seven seven. Hudson's additions to Palaca Heights, map book one, pages eighteen to nineteen, block four, part of lot four, official records book four eighty-two, page fourteen thirty-nine, providing for several ability and providing for an effective date.
I'll move.
Second, there's a motion on the floor and a second. Public hearing, same rules apply. Great six three two nine zero one hundred, YouTube chat or yellow speaker's card? Do we have anything in the YouTube chat?
No, sir, nothing in the chat at this time.
This time we'll close public hearing. Any further discussion? Not questions, call out in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed, motion carries unanimously, moving on.
Thank you.
Moving on to item C, future land use map amendment ordinance twenty one dash zero three for adoption.
That was passed last time.
All right, moving on, item seven, agenda, which is emergency item, the doc resolution number twenty twenty-one R sixty-two, supporting application for Community Development Coalition Corporation to participate in the Florida Community Contribution Tax Credit Program.
A resolution of this.
Just before we get there, we got to accept it as an emergency item.
I'll make a motion that we accept this as a, uh, emergency item.
Second.
There's a motion on the floor and a second. Can, just for the record, can we state our, our reasoning for accepting the emergency item?
It's my unders, ma'am, Ms. Mayor, it's my understanding that the, uh, deadline for applications is, uh, June first.
Just take your name for the record, Mr. Big.
I'm calling, um, eight three three, um, eight two three seven Bay Tree Lane, Jacksonville, Florida. The extension has been given to us to apply our actual application to the Department of Economic Opportunity in the month of June, and the deadline to submit all the paperwork for the tax abatement would be July first through tenth, so.
So times of the S.
Times of the S's.
Okay, at this time, any further questions from the commission as to the, the motion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed, motion carries unanimously. Okay, let's move forward at this time, Ms. Crant.
Thank you. A resolution expressing the city's support for the application by the Community Development Coalition Corporation, eight two thirty-seven Bay Tree Lane, Jacksonville, Florida, three two two five six, to participate in the Florida Community Contribution Tax Credit Program for purposes of accepting charitable donations of cash and/or property to assist in making the necessary revitalization and redevelopment improvements throughout the city of Palaca, providing for compliance with a comprehensive plan, providing for an effective date, and providing for scripners' errors.
There's time, I'll move. There's a motion on the floor and a second for discussion purposes. Now at this time, Mr. Big, I'm going to floor, if you want to go ahead and proceed.
All right, thank you. Um, what I'm asking for is approval of this to go back to the Department of Economic Opportunity, which allows me to go and solicit, uh, tax dollars through sales tax through corporations. It's no cost to the city. And what it'll do is allow more capital for me to go and rehab homes within the city of Palaca specifically. And it's, I have a longer presentation from the Department of Economic Opportunity that you guys should have them file, but it's, you know, due to time, it's a pretty lengthy one. But if there are any questions, I'd be glad to answer anything.
Any questions from the commission?
The, the city attorney has done some research and made some inquiries. If you'd like to ask for her comments.
I was heading that way, you're reading my mind. So go ahead, counsel.
Thank you, mayor. Um, the Community Contribution Tax Credit Program provides a financial incentive up to fifty percent tax credit or sales tax refund to encourage Florida businesses to make donations towards community development and housing projects for low-income residents. It is necessary to, in order to submit an application, that they need a letter of support from the city commission if the, the dollars are going to be directed to the city of Palaca. Um, there is a really no, no loss on our part or no, um, obligation on our part to submit this letter of support.
Yeah, sir, just to, uh, get the public excited about what you're trying to do, just give them a little brief of how it will benefit, uh, the low to moderate income people here in the city of Black.
Okay, and the only correction I made to that is due to COVID, it's a hundred percent. So if a corporation was to give me a dollar towards the rehabilitation within the city of Black, only within the city of Black, then I take those dollars to rehabilitate, um, homes, existing homes, or build new homes again within the city of Black, no cost to the city. Um, I'll use local subcontractors and all of the above. So it's to build for low to moderate income families.
Because it's one of our initiatives to, uh, remove black from throughout our communities, um, are those going to be some of the targeted areas as well here in our city? Just, if you would, just give the citizens a brief.
So it's basically any house within the city of Black that needs rehabilitation. I will acquire it through the nonprofit, which is what CDC sees as use these dollars to rehabilitate those homes. Now, if there's a lot within the city of Black, we can also build a new home on that lot using those tax dollars, the sales tax abatement.
Okay. All right, any further questions from the commission?
Well, what about the prioritization? Like the part, the party of, um, the funding and again, I guess that'll be piggybacking off of, um, Commissioner Jones in terms of, um, location and prioritization, that's, you know, that's what I'll be more concerned with.
So I can't prioritize what locations yet because I don't know how many dollars we'll be getting. It's a statewide program, so I'm competing against everybody in the state in this program. Um, specifically, this program is only for the city of Black. I also have one that's for the city of Jacksonville. But again, I'm just asking for the approval of this resolution for this.
I understand that, but what I'm saying is there are a number of areas that's blighted in, in, within the city limits of Palaca, and that's what I was concerned about. The blighted areas, that, those are the targeted, and we do have a list of those.
So if I'm answering your question correctly, the dollars can only be used for low to moderate income, so I wouldn't be doing a house in areas that don't need that assistance. And to take my background further, um, I have the contract with Fannie Mae, Freddie Mac, and the banks for the first look program. So anything that goes with, through foreclosure, that's in low to moderate income bracket comes to me. And then if I don't choose to do it, then it goes out to the community.
Very well understood. Again, the list that we do have, they're not in, uh, upscale neighborhoods.
Got it.
All right, any other comments from the commission? Seeing none, I'll call a question, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, everybody, appreciate your time.
Next up, city manager administrator reports.
Ma'am, Ms. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Mayor, uh, I'm, uh, here to do something a bit unusual, and that is to offer the commission an apology. And that apology stems from the fact that I attended the meeting that some of these people have referenced. Not with the intent of embarrassing or causing disrespect to any of you, but regardless of intent, it's, uh, the perception has been that, that that could have been a source of, of, uh, feeling of disrespect or embarrassment, and for that I apologize. I'd like to briefly explain the facts of the matter. Not because the facts are an explanation or excuse, because perception is more important than reality, as we all know. But the truth still matters. On Friday, at sometime on Friday, I received a phone call. No prior notice, Friday before Monday, and I was asked if I would be interested in attending a very casual, informal breakfast at which Governor DeSantis would stop by, attended by a few people at CP Deli, an open restaurant, which would be open to the public, uh, in an open room, uh, at which there would not be any lobbying, there would not be any presentation of platforms or agenda, but it would be in the nature of a meet and greet. It sounded innocent enough to me. I was told that I was not to tell anybody, not even my kids, which I assumed was, as happens these days, for security and other purposes, where a celebrity makes a pop-in visit and they are not looking to have the visit widely known because of crowds and security concerns and so forth. So at eight fifteen on Monday morning, I attended. I got there, uh, there was, the governor was not there, there were a few people there. Um, two tables had been pulled together end to end. I sat at the end of one table on the side and ordered breakfast and began to eat. At some point, Governor DeSantis did come in. He sat in the middle of the two tables across, on the opposite side, opposite side from me, said, "How are y'all doing?" And people said, "Fine." And, uh, then casual, random conversation occurred. The meeting was essentially what I was told it would be. There was no opportunity for lobbying, there was no platform presented, there was no in-depth or substantive discussion of anything. I was not asked a question, I was not, I did not ask a question, I was not asked a question, I was never introduced to the governor by name, by title, by nothing. Uh, we ate, the conversation, and I've read what I've seen on Facebook a little bit and what I've seen in the paper about opportunity to discuss the county's needs with the governor, but I didn't hear that discussion. I heard the governor talk about throwing out the first pitch at a baseball game. I heard him talk about masking of children in general. I heard him talk about cruise ships. I heard him talk about generic, random things, not, not anything particular to Putnam County. I didn't hear anybody ask him about Putnam County. He did say something about, um, about broadband, and it wasn't that a great thing, and people said yes. The only comment I made at all was when he asked, "Are y'all opening up?" And Benji Bates, who was with, I think, Blacker Young People, said, "There's going to be an event on the twenty ninth, and a lot of, a lot of people are expected to attend." And I said, "And we've got the biggest single-day bass tournament scheduled for Saturday." That was it, no further discussion. Um, the meeting was over. The meeting was over. Um, there was no discussion, there was, we were in the public room, there were people around us, they were eating breakfast at that time, they could hear what was being said, a couple of them actually applauded it a couple of times to what's something he said. And then I left. Um, as I said, my intentions were not to cause disrespect to anyone or to embarrass anyone. But intentions and unintended consequences are just as hurtful and harmful as intended consequences. And so, uh, of course, when things began to develop and, uh, and, and, and the, the perception began to, to grow, I realized that even though in the past I've tried very hard to remain free of politics and to remain free of, um, anything that might be controversial. I didn't make a contribution to any of the presidential or national candidates. I've not attended any party meetings. I've not posted anything on social media during the time I've been city manager, would do anything that had anything to do with politics. But on this one, I blew it. I attended a meeting, I didn't have anything to do with the invitation list, I didn't have anything to do with, I wasn't told who was going to be there. I was just told that I would know everybody there. And, uh, and of course, having said all of that, the, the bottom line is, I'm not attempting to a- assess or to judge anybody else's intentions. I'm not trying to place fault on anybody else. The people who hosted the party, the people who attended the, the breakfast, I'm not blaming anyone but myself. I'm simply, simply saying that for me, and I'm not even saying it was wrong for them to attend, that's up to them. There were as many business people there as there were people connected with government. I'm simply saying that for me, given my circumstances, uh, given the position that I'm in, I wish I had that decision to make over again. But I don't, all I can do is offer you my sincere apologies and, uh, and, and express my sincere apologies for any disrespect you felt, any, any embarrassment you felt, or any division that my presence there might have added to in this community. That's all I have to say unless you have a question.
Commissioner Borvis, you got any questions?
Is your microphone on, mayor?
Yeah, it's on. Commissioner Borvis, you got questions?
No, I don't, I don't have a question.
Commissioner McCaskill.
I don't have any questions. I was able to sit down with the city attorney, city manager personally and ask all the questions I needed, and I want to say I accept your apology.
Mr. Campbell.
Um, I don't have any questions. I sincerely appreciate, um, you making the, the apology. But, um, I don't have any questions, but I will make a statement during my appropriate time.
Commissioner Jones.
I don't have a statement at this time.
Of course.
I've got a question, so that the record is clear. Who gave the invitation?
Invitation, I understood, came from Bobby Payne, but it was directed to me and to a couple of others from Terry Turner.
I do have a question. Was there not a sunshine law broken during that time, being that there were commissioners on the county level that was there? Um, and there may be things that were discussed that may come before that particular commission?
I don't know. I mean, I was not, as I said, I wasn't privy to their discussions, and of course, their, their sunshine concerns are, are really not, not something that I have jurisdiction or authority to deal with. So I didn't hear any discussions, as I said, that were pointed or that were focused. I really didn't. Um,
I mean.
I sat to my right was Keith Perry, Senator Perry. Across the table was, uh, Mr. Turner. I heard no discussions involving him. On the other end of the table were Mr., uh, Pickens and, uh, and, uh, and also Larry Harvey. I don't, I didn't see Adam Zach at the table, he may very well be, and I just didn't see him there. Um, I didn't notice him there, but I didn't hear discussions of, like I said, what I heard were discussions of random conversations of, like I've described.
I can respect that, but in the newspaper, it's clearly identified that the conversation that was taking place were of issues, um, that will potentially affect Putnam. Um, not saying in a bad way, one was broadband. Um, so there was evident that there was communication, um, with regards to things, again, that may not only come up on this county level, but on the city level. But again, with meaning that there is a level of transparency that we have as an oath that we have taken in the form of ethics. Um, I asked the question to put it out there simply because, in my opinion, there was or could have been the ability have, to have, um, sunshine law violations. Um, and it's my understanding, and sitting in this position since I have in two thousand and fifteen notification of those things, irregardless of who, what, when, where, and how, um, there should have been some form of communication that was sent out. I know we on the city level send it out. Um, if we are going to be in a certain place, um, if there's going to be more than one commissioner, again, that was not done on the county level, but I do want it, I did want it, I did want to bring that up, um, not just for my questioning, but for citizens' questionings as well.
Next question, um, when you're told not to tell anybody, do your antennas go up?
As I explained, Mr. Mayor, I always explained this was going to be a casual, informal, non-specific conversation. The governor had about forty-five minutes or less to, to be present. I think he was there for less than forty-five minutes. And that there wasn't going to be any platform or particular discussion. From my perspective, it was a matter of, the, the answer is no. From my perspective, it was a matter of them not wanting, uh, people to know that he was going to be in town because of the security issues and because of potential crowd issues. So, you know, no.
I do have.
Now in retrospect, you know, I wish I had.
No, because of security issues, did you tell the chief?
Thank you, that was my question.
Did I tell the chief, it wasn't my party. I was invited to go. When we got there, there were two FDLE people there that I saw initially, uh, there may have been more, and there were Putnam County sheriff's deputies there.
I have a question. Um, how did he get to Putnam County?
I don't know. We were seated in the restaurant. As I said, we, I'd already ordered something to eat, we're sitting there, and he came in the door, sat down, said, "How y'all doing?" I don't know. We were seated in the restaurant. As I said, we, I'd already ordered something to eat. We're sitting there and he came in the door, sat down and said, how y'all doing?
So we're not aware if he flew into our airport?
I have no idea how he got here.
Okay. Um, did it not cross your mind when you went into this quote unquote breakfast of sorts, where you saw other individuals that represent other municipalities, but you didn't see anyone of the municipality that you represent? Did it not ring a bell to ask why we were not present or say if we do not have the ability to bring at minimum our mayor into that particular meeting?
In retrospect, I should have just left, but as I said, if I could. About half the people there were not even, well, in retrospect, I understand that some of the politicians that were there were not invited. There were four or five business people there. And as I said, there was, or six. There was many business people there as there were, as there were political people. And, um, it, it didn't, there were others. I mean, the supervisor of elections wasn't there. The clerk of court wasn't there. The tax collector wasn't there. The,
But there was someone that represented the municipalities. Again, you had county representation. You had the sheriff's department. Again, there was no representation of the city outside of you and we are the delegating body.
Great. And I never spoke on behalf of the city. I never represented a platform on behalf of the city. I never even asked a question on behalf of the city. I was there in a casual, informal setting and that's the way I was told it was going to be.
Anything else? All right. Thank you. All right. I'm going to forego, um, any further reports from department heads at this time. We'll move into commission comments. Mr. Bickers, you, you got about two seconds.
I'm sorry?
Were there campaign contributions?
I know of no campaign contributions. I didn't make any.
You got the other two seconds. Yes, sir.
I can't, how, how in this God world, anybody would, oh, how in this God's world that anybody with any common sense could recognize the fact that the governor would come to Palacka if he didn't have objective in mind? Now, it's no way you can tell me that he didn't have a j- injective in mind had he not, he wouldn't have come. Now, everything happened, there's a reason. Now, there's a reason behind it. You, we may not get to it and nobody might not say it. But there's no way that governor would have come to Putnam County if he didn't have objective in mind. He came here for something. Now, you, you can sugarcoat it, sugarcoat it, windmill it all you want, but let's deal with the facts. And there's no way you can convince anybody in this room that have common sense to recognize the fact that he didn't come here for something. Now, you can take it any way you want. It was disrespectful.
Direct your comments.
And okay, and like I said, due to the makeup of the city commission, you felt that it wasn't important for them to meet with the commission, with the governor.
All right. We're going to close. Any further public comment? Move on to comments from the commission. I'll go in order. Commissioner Board.
I have no, no comment other than my, my whole point is, we got ten thousand five hundred people that, uh, we need to be, uh, providing services to, uh, the citizens of Palacka. I, I, I don't want this thing to be something that, uh, take us off of our, our vision, our mission. Our mission is to help the people. And so we don't want to get sidetracked or detracted from with all of this distortion. So, um, I, I just think that we could, uh, uh, it, it's that, I think we got, we don't have all the facts. We don't know why all of these things happen. And so, again, I, I accept the apology and, you know, ho- hopefully this is, um, not a problem going forward. So, again, my, my concern is the ten thousand five hundred people I serve every day. So that's, that's, that's all I have.
Commissioner McCaskill.
I don't have any comments. Additional comments at this time.
Commissioner Campbell.
Um, again, I do appreciate the, the apology. Um, and my comment is directed not to you at this moment, but to those who planned it and those that knew of it. I was, I feel it's very disrespectful. Um, while we represent ten thousand five hundred or more, he represents the millions that live in this great city of Florida. And to come to a place, to come to my home and not have the courtesy to at least give a greeting, if not, my political affiliation has nothing to do with it. If that was the case, we represent nonpartisans. Our seat is nonpartisan. We represent the people as a whole. We don't just represent Democrats. We don't just represent Republicans. We don't just represent independents. We represent the citizens of Palacka, the Chamber of Commerce who receive money from this commission. It's a slap in the face for this to fly, for him to fly into our airport, the city of Palacka, not Putnam County, but the city of Palacka. Again, it's a slap in the face. And to the citizens who have stood behind us or brought this to the light, again, I'm grateful for you. And again, I will not take disrespect. If I don't have a seat at the table, we'll create our own. Not once did the individuals who had a planning of this reach me, reach out to me, or reach out to anyone of that matter that I'm aware of. But again, it was disrespectful. And again, my comment is not solely directed to you. Again, I wholeheartedly accept. But for those who sit in places that supposed to represent not only the city of Palacka, but our county, you can't come to my house and I give you, you can't come to my house and you give better treatment than I can in my own house. But again, not to have the courtesy to just greet the governor. I think the issue is much bigger than Attorney Holmes attending that meeting. The picture is for those who sit in the positions who did not think it was okay for us to be around that table, irregardless of who, what, when, where, and how. We should have had a seat at that table. And in my closing, I'm still waiting on an apology from them as well. Thank you.
I had opportunity to speak with the city manager as well on a one-on-one. During our conversation, I was a little perturbed in a response that I asked. And it was about, uh, if you had it, do it over again, would you do the same thing? Would you think about how it looked to others, how it made us feel? And, uh, and correct me if I'm wrong, uh, what the home said, considering the circumstances that he was told not to tell us that he would because it was the lo- the, the, his word that he gave to the person that invited him. I wa- I was a little perturbed about that because it made me think, where do your loyalty lie? And I won't get up here and grandstand, and I know people probably expected me of all folk to, to, to get on it and to be on this thing. People who elected me and I said, I will be your voice. I'm gonna do that. Uh, don't sit well with me. We may not agree on everything up here, but I think we all love our community and really care for our community and the best for our community. That picture, the meeting itself, and some of the things I heard behind closed doors as far as some of the folks won't get, we won't get things done if we're at those tables because certain other folk could get things done. Uh, that probably none of us, it was, it was a one-on-one, Timmy, me and the city manager. Just to let you know. So some of us couldn't get things done. I was appalled by that statement. And if you remember a few weeks ago, I said, I don't like the one-on-one's conversations because those one-on-one conversations need to be brought to the public. We need to stop. We need to be transparent with what we say so we can be held accountable. Okay? Uh, we have, perception is reality. You guys saw the pictures. We don't know what the conversation was. And we probably would never know totally. And again, I'm just going to say it, how I opened it. If you're not telling us about a visit, what else are you not telling?
Mayor, I, I do have to have a, I would like to have opportunity to respond briefly.
Yeah.
First of all, the conversation was not one-on-one. This Thomas was present. And, and the question was, if you were asked not to say anything to anybody again, would you next time tell us? And I said, no. I said, what I would do would be tell them, if I can't tell the elected officials, then I'll have to decline the invitation. That's what I said. So the, the response was, if I can't tell the elected officials, I just will not come myself. That's what I said, because I did tell them. I won't tell them that I will keep my word and keep the invitation secret and lie to them and then go tell you. My word is more important than that. But what I will do is I will tell them, if I am not allowed to tell my elected officials, then I will not come. That's what I said.
And, and you do stand corrected. And I stand corrected. You did say something like that. But he, again, still my concern would be, why can't you just give us invite and say, hey, listen? And, and again, you, I still, I accept your apology as well, but it still don't sit well with me. And I have to let you know that. And just to bring this out, I've sat over there on that side prior to being elected and watched two other city managers be fired without a cause, without any explanation. And we had people on this commission that did that. But when an issue like this is up, you know, we tend to let it go by the wayside. You just have to know how the people feel, uh, city manager. But does it actually warrant that? I don't know. That's up to the people. I let you know how I feel about it. And I think everybody else have, uh, up until this point. So those are the issues that I have a problem with going forward. Can we move forward? With those questions, I don't know. But in order for this city to to move forward, we're going to have to have a seat at the table. When those things happen, uh, anything come up with the, the county commissioner? How can we get with the county commissioners and, and build a bond when they don't want us to their meetings? How can we go and lobby up in Tallahassee or, uh, Washington DC if they don't want us to the table? Um, so we, we have some work to do. And, and, and I think that the public seeing this display have to realize how far we got to go, not how far we have gone. We got a long ways to go and you need to understand that in this community. And it isn't easy being up here because you've seen it for the first time publicly. Okay? Just because we up here don't mean that we're making all those decisions. All right. And that's all I have to say.
Mayor, if I may. Not so long ago, we had, we made decisions about closings of certain schools. And in the process of that, they created a facilities workshop group. And I was one of the individuals invited to sit at the table and be a part of the decision-making process. When this groups were being formed, I was asked to keep this confidential until they formed and created the groups. And I did. We met and subsequent of the meeting, there was a public meeting held over in the parking lot of Jenkins Middle School. I did not know the meeting was taking place until it was actually happening live on Facebook. Some of the same concerns were brought before the superintendent and associate superintendent. And they identified the individuals that had a seat at the table. And I was one of those individuals. And many of the same people in this room, including my fellow commissioner, replied to that and said that I shouldn't have had a seat at that table. And it was heartbreaking to me because not only should I had a seat at that table, I sh- I should have had the biggest voice at that table. Because I have sentimental value to Jenkins Middle School. I didn't attend Jenkins Middle School, but I went to the gymnasium. And the media center is named after my aunt. The Megan Miller Media Center who worked at Jenkins Middle School for thirty years. That hurt. Cause I don't know why. Because I was a district employee. I have grandkids going through that school. I'm a stakeholder. And I don't know who better should have had a seat at the table other than me. So I'm just confused. I know a lot of you, I'm not a person. I try to stay very professional and be very respectful. But I just, I have a question. And I have a question to my, some of the people that were there. Who, who do you all think should have certain seats at certain tables? And who are the people? Is it up to you all? Because surely I had a seat at the table, but it was by some of the same people in this room. And you, Mr. Jones, I reviewed the video to make sure I was, I was right that said, it's, it's obvious you're selecting the wrong people and look around. They're not in the parking lot. But it was clear, I didn't receive the invitation. And as the meeting was taking place, I did call some of the individuals that were invited that was speaking and said, how did y'all find out? Because I didn't. And if I'm not mistaken, it was my, the people in my community that held the meeting. So I just want to know, do y'all really want us to have a seat at the table? Or is it up to you all who gets to have an opportunity? Cause I feel I'm just as important. I feel that things that have a direct impact on our lives are just as important as the governor coming to town. Our voice should matter at all times. And any topic that's related to us that impacts us should be just as important as any topic that the governor brings to Palacka. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay. So I assume that you're talking about me, Ms. McCaskill? Okay. So absolutely. I was there because it was a community event trying to save a community school. I, I'm giving you one. A community event trying to save a community school that you feel fond of, apparently. And I did say that. I did say that none of the folk that were out there were selected to be on that board to try to save those schools. And it showed they were not. You are an employee of the school district. So are you going to go against your employer? Probably not. So that's, that's my comment. And it was not to be derogatory towards you. It was actually making a, a true statement. So,
I think that anybody knows me, knows that I'm courageous, transparent. And it does not matter who my opponent is, employee is. I'm going to stand for what I believe in. And it's evident. And anybody that knows me can say that. And I'm done. Thank you, Mayor. And I,
Thank you, thank you, Mayor, as well.
I'm up now. So it's, it's always interesting that, and I don't want us to get off of the topic. Because at the end of the day, this isn't about us inviting. This is about the realities of what's going on in this community. And so I made a post that said, if you don't have a seat at the table, you're on the menu. I, I'll tell you, I, I saw a post on Facebook, young man's in here, and I applaud him for his consciousness and the ability for him to see what was going on. And Mr. Eisen was the first person who put a post out there, but I was made aware. Question was, how can the governor come to Palaka and the commission not be invited? And I said, when? And they, and the response was twenty-two minutes ago, here's the Facebook post. And so at that point, I was, uh, a bit beyond mad. I wasn't hurt, but I was mad and disrespected at that point. And so when I saw the picture, you know, I did what I was taught to do. And that is if your brother fends, you go to him. And so I went to him. I started calling. And when I started calling, I went down the list. The first person I called says, I got a call from the chamber saying, be here at eight fifteen at CP Delic. I had to get my kids. I had to find a way to get my kids ready for school. And I got my wife to take them to school so I could go. So I called Anna Jones from the chamber. She says, I got a call from Representative Payne saying the governor's coming, don't tell anybody, but I need you to bring some business owners and some chamber members. So I called Representative Payne, he didn't answer. Called Mr. Holmes, and our conversation ended up being cut short because Representative Payne has called back. But I learned that Mr. Holmes got the call from Representative Payne's. Whether he got it through a third party or not, it came from Payne at the end of the day. And, um, and so when I talked to Representative Payne, he said, well, he says, Terrell, I, I made the calls, but I didn't have much time to, to invite everybody. And I know some people get their feelings hurt because everybody wants to see the governor. And I clearly said, I'm not breaking down any doors to see the governor. And, uh, so, but it's not about my politics or his politics. And so I said, this is about respect. I said, because when I see that picture, what I see is it looks like a bunch of guys who just left the OK Corral, who came together to have a meeting. I said, and there's no face in there that represents the city, except the city manager. He said, well, he's a full-time employee. I said, but you got other representatives and the county administrator there from the county. I said, so if you can invite elected officials from the county, and you can, and you can invite the city manager, then why wouldn't you invite the city commissioners? I said, my commission, um, should be there just as a city manager. I said, because at the end of the day, we set the policies. And we set the priorities for the city moving forward. And, um, and we give the directives because the city, the city manager works at the direction of the city commission. And so when you have the highest ranking official in government in the state of Florida present, why wouldn't you have the highest ranking officials in the city that you're going to? Our charter says that the mayor has no powers differently than the commission, which means that everybody sits on this dais is on the same plane. And so if we sit on the same plane, and we should all get the same invitation, and we should have the same level of respect that you give to our counterparts in county government. But let's just set the stage of where we are in Putnam County, because we seem to forget what's going on around here. Not very long ago, this summer, last summer, we found ourselves in a situation where, as all of America was beginning to fight and loot and riot and be set apart by the death of George Floyd, which was only the, the ticking point of everything that took place. It wasn't very long ago that this community was having protests about social justice, about inclusion, about rights that have been, that are supposedly inalienable, but have been alienated. We found ourselves in a position where liberty and justice for all wasn't for everybody. And it became a very divisive measure. Before that, half of the state, half of the country found itself divided politically over who was gonna be in leadership. And we've gone through an insurrection. Treasonous activity being atrocities being placed upon this country and disrespect in all manners. And we consider what we wanna say, but a lot of it's black and white. It's about race. It's about ethics. It's about culture. It's about right and it's about wrong. And the America that I dream of, and the America that most of us dream of, is supposed to be one where we all had the same opportunities, where we all gained the same level of respect, and where we were all treated equally. But it seems to be the justice and equality are farcism in this country and in this county. Because there's no way that we continually have eighteen sixty-five discussions today. But we're continually having the same discussions that our parents and our grandparents had, and it's timeout. And so my issue isn't so much with how, with the people who got the invitation as it is with the inviter. And so Representative Payne was the person who gave the invitation. And that invitation came with malice aforethought. I don't care what anybody else says. It was contemplated. It was thought out publicly. And his intent was to get the people that he thought was there. And so let's just look at the people who were invited. The newspaper's picture said the county leaders. The, the article says, we talked about county issues, including rural broadband. Well, the last time I checked, the city of Palaka was the county seat of Putnam County. It had the largest number of businesses, the largest culmination or concentration of citizens within the community. And some of the highest levels of poverty. And the last time that I've checked, technology redlining was a very serious thing. There are so many people who had rights abridged from them by government and putting poverty into areas such as public housing, where we are now crippled by not having access to internet, particularly when children are distance learning. Not very long ago, the city of Palaka had to lend its hotspots to certain areas of this community just so that kids could get access to their school lessons. But if you wanna talk about rural broadband, when you come to the city of Palaka, to have that conversation, since most of your schools are in the city of Palaka. But again, that's obviously not what was on the menu that day. So as we begin to talk further, and just to show you how things work, is there's sometimes God gonna put you in the right place so you can hear the right information. So as I go to my foundation board, remember, the conversation is about governor throwing out the first pitch, before he became governor and how ESPN had him ranked. Now he went on about that. It sound like broadband to me, and it's confirmed that the conversation was more about rhetoric than it was about what needed to be done in Florida while you fly on the state plane to come to this city on the state's dollar, which are paid for by the citizens, but you wanna exclude certain segments of the community. So I don't really understand, because what I learned about government was that we have a representative form of government. And regardless of whether I'm Democrat or Republican or black or I'm white, once you win, you represent everybody. I don't just represent white people or black people. I represent other people. And so this commission does the same thing. And that's where my issue falls in. But I, I read an interesting quote today, and I guess it, I guess sometimes you have to give credit to people by those who they associate with. So, um, it said that if you don't support the winning team while they're on the field, don't expect to be invited to the locker room party. Now, that comes from Leota Wilkinson, who is Representative Payne's assistant. And so I, I just don't, I, I don't think that anybody that works for City Palaka would make that quote. Now, I can't, I can't read it to it, but I will. And so the last time I checked, the, the winning team was, was Team Florida. And Team Florida didn't consist of just the Republican Party and the Democratic Party. It didn't consist of just white people or black people. But maybe I'm, maybe I'm missing something somewhere along the line. And if you understand what the climate has been in this country and this state, and you understand what the politics and how divisive they've been around here, even with the county governments' decisions as it relates to the monument put in place, then it, it's almost lost upon me about anybody to miss this situation. Because even if you miss what's going on with the invitation, but I know for me, that if you roll up on me and you say, don't tell anybody, my first question's gonna be, why? And, and if your why ain't right, we won't get to anything else. But let's move forward and just to say, we missed that. Once you get into the function, and you look around, and there's nobody there who works with you, but everybody else is represented in mass, then you gotta say something, you're doesn't smell right. And like I told everybody that I called along the way, I called business owners, I called Representative Payne, and I, and I told Representative Payne, I said, you know, he says, I apologize for your feelings being hurt. I said, don't apologize for my feeling, cause they not hurt. I said, I'm ticked off, and I'm mad because I've been disrespected in my house. He goes, well, we didn't invite the newspaper. I said, well, I'm not the newspaper. I'm the mayor of the city. I said, you won't disrespect me or my commission. And I said, this is the reality of it. I said, not only am I the mayor of Palaka, but I'm also the president of the Florida League of Mayors, of the largest organization of mayors in the state of Florida. And I said, if you can invite the county commissioner in here, you can invite the city commissioners the same way. I said, I, and he goes, well, it just wasn't enough time to get everybody in. I said, well, I've already talked to everybody who you invited, and you started on Friday. And I said, so between Friday and Monday, it seems like there's a whole bunch of time for to do whatever you needed to do. And I said, at the end of the day, I might feel better if you say, no blacks are Democrats. I said, but don't lie to me and tell me that you didn't have time. So, no, no, Mayor, that's not it. I said, man, I, my, my biggest issue is, we as a commission of the city, we're constantly saying we're better together. We are constantly saying, one Palaka under God. We're constantly doing all these different things. And the more we say one, the more it seems like everybody wants two still. And it's hard to, 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 to just preach unity when everybody around you is, is perpetuating hate and isolation and separatism, and they're trying to make all of us be divided, whether it's bipartisan division or whether, or it's division by race. And we all seem to turn a blind eye to the fact that race is real. The history has input poverty into the city of Palaka through policies which were designed to make sure that there were gaps in place. And government has a distinct role in making sure that that stuff is corrected. But we all wanna deny what the history is. We've spent a lot of time talking about common ground, but the ground doesn't really seem to be common because nobody wants to empathize in order for us to grow as a community. We're on the cusp of one of the greatest economic booms that this community has ever seen. And we can't even get out of our own ways because we stuck in our old ways. And until we get to a point where we can do better, we're gonna be stuck right there. So I appreciate the city manager giving an a public apology. But he knows one of my sayings is, I ain't, I'm not really tired of being mad. And that's something that I say on a regular basis in certain situations. Because I'm mad because I feel betrayed. I'm mad because I feel disrespected. I'm mad because the people up here who give their time, their heart and their soul, there's not enough money in the world for, for what we do and what we get from people that we serve. But we get kicked and discriminated against. And uninvited or not invited to so many functions in this community where they say, oh, we just forgot to send it to you guys. It doesn't matter if it's people that the city has served and given stuff to for a million years. But seems like when the melanin increase on the dais, the invites decrease. Because it doesn't happen that way. I've been here, and the governor's been here three or four times over the past six years. And every time I get a phone call that says, Mayor, the governor's coming in here, we're having a fundraiser or some other event going on before that, but then he's gonna come make a public appearance at this place, or he's gonna be in Wheelacca, or he's gonna be in Palaka at this event, and we want you to come, and the commissioners to come, and everybody come in because we want, we want him to recognize you. If it's the director of DOT, it's the same way. If it's the secretary, it's the same way. And in this particular situation, I guess we wasn't on the right team because we only serve Team Florida. We only serve Team Palaka. We only serve Team America. And, and that's, that's just really the, the most sickening part of the whole thing. And I, I just, I'm at a point where I really don't understand how we can keep putting blinders on. When at the end of the day, I've seen communities all over this country start to look at the actions that government takes and figure out, and put policies in place to figure out what the disparate impacts are gonna be when you take certain steps. How is it gonna affect people from all different ethnicities, from all different communities, from all, from all different walks of life? What will my actions do and how will they be read by others? Cause that's the climate that we're in. We're in the midst of the preliminary stages of a civil war, and everybody wants to turn blinders on and say they don't see what's going on. What's going on is, 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 is not good for America. It's not what it's supposed to be. This city was built in eighteen fifty-three, and at that point, we wouldn't even consider to be people as African-Americans. We were chattel. Separate but equal was the way that things were. It won't be the way things are. And my problem is that if our leadership can sit at a table and take a picture and look at that picture, and they don't see people who look different, then you got your eyes closed while they open. Because this is the reality. I've watched him raise his level of consciousness on issues and do certain things that are in place. And even get ostracized by some of the people that were considered friends because he stood up against the monument continually being placed in front of the courthouse. But one of the questions that I asked Mr. Holmes when he became s- city manager was, will your relationships that you've had as a professional, as a person in this community for four decades impede your ability to be loyal to the city of Palaka? Now, do I think he loves Palaka and this community? Yes, absolutely. Would I ever in my life infer that he's racist? No, never. And I can say that publicly. Will I say the same about some of his friends? Probably not. And, and that's just me being honest. But what I will say is I think he's sincere, um, in the steps that he takes. But I can't say that he hasn't lost my trust. That's just being honest. And I can look him in his eyes and tell you the same thing that I tell him. As a man, I can tell him that part of my trust is broken. And it's gonna take a heck of a lot to get it back. And where I am right now is, my focus is making sure that this commission, that this community doesn't get further divided by the antics of people like Bobby Payne. I won't even put it on the governor, because the governor wasn't invited. Bobby lives in this house. That bell could ring till Jesus comes home. But I'm gonna finish saying what's on my mind, because at the end of the day, I will fall into a position where they try to, they'll beat us down for being wronged. If we are to serve the people in this country, in this community, then you need to be aware of what's going on. My taxes and your taxes pay the bills. They don't, they don't have white taxes and black taxes anymore. They got taxes, and we pay them, and we pay for services, and we pay for rights, and we pay for opportunities. And when the governor comes here, he needs to listen to my black words the same way he listened to white words. He needs to listen to what goes on in our poor little town the same way he listened to what goes on over at the county. Because at the end of the day, they put us all in the same box. We're one of the poorest communities in this state. We've got one of the, we've got a struggling education system. We got a struggling economic system. But we got people who care. And we can't continually let people represent us who don't represent all. And that's just where we are. And that's just where we are. And so in closing, I'll say this to this commission. I'm frustrated. I'm not tired of being mad. My trust has been broken. And more than anything else, we've been disrespected. We're gonna continually preach unity. We're gonna continually preach one Palaca under God. And if they wanna go set them a table out in the woods, let them go set their table in the woods. But at this address, in this community, we are serving everybody. Because my teachings taught me that black, yellow, brown, black or white, we all precious in God's sight. And at the end of the day, if we don't realize that regardless of what color we have on our skin, we deserve the same respect and dignity as everybody else. And I'm just tired of the good old boys. And I never thought, and for me, I never try to give people credit of being the good old boys. But I'm tired of the good old boys thinking that they're gonna set the table. Because the table's set in Palaca, and they just hope that they get an invitation. Because we're gonna continually move, and our table's gonna be just what this community is. A melting pot and a rainbow that set aside is the last true snapshot of old Florida, where blacks and whites and Latino and Hispanic and men and women are sitting together where they can all count the same. And we can move forward, and we're gonna do what's right, not what's popular. And that's just where we are. And so those are my comments. And I leave again with Mary Lawson Brown's famous saying that we are better together. And if the all-white Palaca didn't work, the all-black Palaca's not gonna work either. But we not gonna be kicked out of here. And at the end of the day, I'm gonna demand that we get just what everybody else has got. And Commissioner Campbell, you're absolutely right. We don't get invited to the table. We gonna make our own. But the governor's gonna hear from me. They don't hear from anybody else. And at the end of the day, I'm gonna demand an apology. And I'm gonna demand that this commission be given the respect that is due. With that being said.